We're actually just a couple of minutes early, but if everybody's ready. I said, we're a couple of minutes early, but if you're ready. Everybody on that end ready? We're going to call the February twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-five Regular Cherokee Village City Council Meeting to Order. If you care to stand and join with me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll recognize a moment of silence, please. I apologize beforehand, my head's all stopped up tonight, so if somebody goes to say something, you might have to make a hand motion. Because I can't hear real good. Roll call, please, Ms. Clerk.
Harrison.
Here.
Rachel Tatum.
Here.
Thompson.
Here.
Martin.
Here.
Low.
Here.
Ishmael.
Here.
Jeff Tatum.
Here.
Roland.
Here.
Mayor, Clerk, and Attorneys in attendance, form established.
Thank you all for being here tonight. Had a minute to look over the agenda for tonight.
Mayor, I'd like to remove old business number three until we have a working meeting about it.
Okay.
That's my motion.
Motion by Mr. Martin, seconded by Mr. Tatum to approve tonight's agenda with the removal of old business number three, which is meeting attendance by phone.
A very quick executive session, please.
Okay.
We can do it at the end of everything, so everyone can leave if they want to. But it will be quick.
And you have to state a reason why.
It's employment.
Personal personnel.
Yeah, personnel.
Said with the addition of the executive session is at the end of new business. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like a sign. Motion passes.
Excuse me, Mayor, who seconded that?
Uh, Mr. Tatum. I believe Ms. Clerk, you got the thank you cards?
So it's the Darts for Hearts first.
Alrighty. Oh, I see that. I thank you all for being here. It's like the, pretty nice.
Yeah, let's see that.
Hey, what does that, what does everybody just stand up right there? That would even be better. Yeah, shoot, yeah.
It's a bigger group than I thought.
I know. I'm glad to see a big group.
Yeah, come out and throw darts with us. We'll raise money for the community.
Shoot, yeah. Doing a good thing. You guys are coming for the October Halloween Fest. That's a good deal, too. Everybody really enjoys that.
We're actually looking to help the fire department for Easter this year, too.
Okay.
Do you want to explain that again?
Yeah.
Here is the card.
Here's the card.
Oh, thank you.
The Copper Feather Darts for Hearts Club held a Mardi Gras themed dinner fundraiser for the animal control for Cherokee Village. And they also collected a pickup truck full of animal food and five hundred and sixty-seven dollars was donated that night. So, thank you all.
Thank you.
Said I very much appreciate you all.
Awesome job, sir.
Thank you. Like I said, thank you for doing the Halloween thing and thank you for getting with the Easter egg hunt. Oh, yeah.
Who's the chair of the Darts for Hearts? For record, we put your name.
Yeah, Billy Sooters. I know where his VJ is.
Is the chair.
Yeah, she is the chair.
So we're going to go play darts now and tell to y'all's business.
Thank you all.
Thank you all.
Thank you very much. Awesome job.
Appreciate you so much.
Next is Ms. Borland. Come forward here, Ms. Cat. Ms. Borland, she organized the Valentine Dinner Dance to raise proceeds for the Cherokee Village Fire Department and Police Department. Come on up here. I know Monty and Cal just love getting in the pictures. Now smile, you know. You got to turn this way, Monty, where the camera's facing. And she done a really good thing. They had the help from the Artisan's Restaurant. It was a very good thing. Thank you very much. And I heard all the best reviews. They said it was a great, had a great time with it.
Yes, thank you very much. We really appreciate it.
Thank you, guys.
And we heard the food was real good.
Yeah, had great food, too. Oh, there they are. They done walked off. There you go. Thank you all, Dave and Christie, too.
Can I say something?
And like I said, stuff like this, I hope it just keeps getting bigger and bigger. You know, I'm actually, our October Halloween hunt, I'm afraid it's, as big as it's getting, I hope we run out of parking lot this year.
There you go.
Alrighty. Moving on to tonight, anybody have any public comments or questions on agenda items? Seeing none, had a few minutes to look over the minutes from the last meeting. To entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the last meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Tatum, you got beat. Motion by Mr. Martin, seconded by Mrs. Tatum to approve the minutes from our last regular meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like a sign. Motion passes. Correspondents, financials. We're kind of went a little bit technology, low technology tonight without the computers, because everybody had a chance to look over financial paperwork that was put out in the council packet.
Yes.
It's down in the new business. We need to, we'll stay with the paperwork.
I make a motion to accept the financials?
We don't really have to do that.
You don't have to, yeah. So, we're moving right along. You're going to get to hear me and my State of the City report. I told them, I said, you get to listen to me for a few seconds here, maybe a minute. So the February two thousand and twenty-five, this is the Cherokee Village Arkansas State of the City for two thousand and twenty-four. I wanted to start off by saying the State of the City is good. The city passed legislative audit for two thousand and twenty-two through two thousand and twenty-three. The year ended with a welcomed increase in sales tax revenue and with negotiating for higher interest rates at our local banks to maximize our earning potential. The city received about three point two million in revenue with about three point three million in expenses, which left a budget deficit of about twenty-five thousand dollars, which is less than one percent, or right at one percent is what we figured. We had unexpected air conditioner replacements that were not budgeted for at City Hall and Bayshark Fire Stations that added about fifty thousand dollars to the budget. The city administration office has been hard at work getting the city of Cherokee Village's website up and going. The website has updated information for the contractors list, bills of assurance, ordinances, resolutions, council meeting packets, meeting minutes, and videos. City departments have a tab for which their information will be housed. The calendar tab will have meetings and events posted on it, and the city's Facebook page will share meetings and events also. The city fire department answered about seven hundred and nine calls for service in two thousand and twenty-four, with about fifty-six of the calls being fire-related and about five hundred and seventy-five of the calls being medical calls. The department took delivery of a two thousand and twenty-five Ford F-550 service truck built by URA?
UNRA.
UNRA, UNRA Fire Incorporated, paid for with federal ARPA and CARES Act money. It has been a greatly needed asset for them. Engine two, which is a two thousand and eight Kenworth, required a major engine rebuild in two thousand and twenty-four. It is now repaired and in use. The Cherokee Village Fire Department Auxiliary purchased a new device to use for lifting patients to help make it safer, not only for the patient, but reduce injury to firefighters when lifting. The Cherokee Village Fire Department Auxiliary also hosted the annual Easter Egg Hunt, Pancake Breakfast, and MDA Fill the Boot Campaign, which were all a great success. The CVFD Auxiliary started the first ever scholarship to graduating seniors in the Highland School District that have an immediate family member in either a volunteer or professional firefighter job. And they raised the funds and were able to award four seniors scholarships in two thousand and twenty-four. That's very amazing. Thank you all. The street department was busy last year with cutting back brush, cleaning ditches, and mowing. In May, the city experienced high straight line winds with speeds of up to eighty miles an hour. The street department employees worked on clearing streets, cutting down the trees, and opened an area at the city shop for residents to bring brush and drop off. They were able to make about eleven hundred tons of cold patch asphalt that was used for overlay and potholes in the city streets. A two thousand and eight Chevrolet twenty-five hundred four-by-four plow truck was purchased to replace two of our nineteen-eighties models plow trucks that were beyond repair. The city street department provided village pride with two dump trucks for roadside cleanup and provided manpower and equipment for the citywide drop-off. The police department responded to five thousand seven hundred and thirty-four calls for service and made one hundred and thirty-eight arrests, worked fifty-two accidents, and had two hundred and forty-three citations written. They put two new Ford police trucks into service that were purchased with federal ARPA and CARES Act money. They hired a grant writer, and with his help have received about ninety thousand dollars worth of grants. The grant money, along with some city money, was used to purchase the new in-car computers, purchase two thermal cameras for the night shift officers to use, booster packs, and a small air compressors for the patrol vehicles. They have started to update the police camera system to Axion from WatchGuard System, which was bought out by another company and is no longer supported. I want to thank the department heads, along with our entire city employees. They have and continue to work very hard to provide the very best services to the citizens of Cherokee Village. I also want to thank all the volunteers that help daily with everything from answering phones to taking care of the animal shelter, to doing fundraising activities, and helping keep our city clean. Thank you all. And also, a little side note, we have been, the city clerk and I, along with Misty, administrative assistant, has been talking with CSA, which is our software supplier that takes care of all our computer software for our, you know, for everything up front. It's, Ms. Penny's got the most information on it, but it's getting very, it hasn't been updated in several, several years, like as long as Misty can remember.
We looked up and it was installed roughly about two thousand and eight.
Oh, yeah, it's been a while.
So it's, right now, we have two hundred and thirty-nine pages of vendors listed in there. Also thirteen pages of accounts and line items. What it's doing is, there's so much information in there, it's slowing, the system can't work correctly.
Yeah, it's dragging the mainframe down.
It's got to search too much information. With each treasure, and they went back, Misty named five treasures today. Each treasure does something a little bit different, so there's five different ways of doing things within this system. And they need to come in and set us up a whole new database so that we can merge what we no longer use and update what we do and get the duplicates and everything out of it. It also will make things much easier for Misty and the treasurer because you're not looking through so much information. When you type in, say you would type in ABC Electronics, it might be in there ABC Electronics, ABC Electronics LLC, depending who put it in there. It may pull up five different things and you're putting the stuff in the wrong account.
Yeah. And in his name, Scott?
Scott.
Yeah. Scott is the guy we deal with through CSA. We've been all talking back and forth over the last month about the possibility of him taking the system we got now, and of course, the database we got now, getting a new, building a new database and to what we need to consolidate all our this information and stuff that's been building up since two thousand and eight, which, he said that he can do it. We're kind of in the preliminary things, preliminary right now. We don't exactly know. He said somewhere between, to do everything is between five to seven thousand dollars to get everything done and build the database. So when he gets the more concrete numbers, I can come to you with concrete numbers. I just wanted to get that out because we'll be coming.
He's telling us it's going to take him, it could take up to two months to get this all done. And we have two computers that it has to go on to, so that's why we're still in the holding stages. They're trying to end out their year and start their year at CSA. So they have to get that done before he can leave the office and actually come here and sit and do the work. So that's why it's still in the preliminary.
Okay. Go ahead.
Does this interact with the Fish System?
Excuse me?
Does this interact with the Fish System?
The Fish System.
Laser Finch?
Yeah, Laser Fish.
No.
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 Is there a reason it doesn't interact with the Laser Fish System?
Big, to my knowledge, the information that it exists is more secure and more personal. It's got more personal than what the Laser Finch. The Laser Fish, they have access on Misty's mind and the treasurer's computer. So it's there, but it does not interact with it.
I was under the impression that Laser Fish did sort of the same thing that this program is doing.
No.
So Laser Fish is just document storage?
As far as I know, it's all.
Are we up to date on Laser Fish? Or are we out of date on Laser Fish?
No.
Because that's another one of the things that we should look into as long as we're doing software. And maybe speak with this gentleman and see if there is some interaction between the two that can be had as long as he's rebuilding a database.
CSA is on Misty's computer and on Amy's computer. It is not on the clerk's. Because the clerk does not have access to that.
The CSA is all, it's the accounting software.
It's the accounting software.
Correct, but Laser Fish can have all the receipts and stuff scanned into it very quickly and be put someplace that if somebody wants to come in and see the electric bill for two thousand and six, boom, there's the electric bill for two thousand and six.
Yeah, it's a document storage.
And that's what Highland was using and I think upgraded four or five years ago. So I was just wondering if they work together or not.
And what we need on Laser Fish, what we got to do on it is it's, then in off-site storage is what they're.
That's what we need to go to on that is take it to the cloud.
Yeah, we got to have off-site storage.
Right now, it's being stored right on our storage system here.
Yeah, we get to work on.
And that could also slow it down if it's in the same system.
Pardon?
If it's in the same server, it could slow that down, too.
Exactly.
So anyway, we're looking at doing some software upgrades, so be, just for knowledge and be prepared that we'll be coming to you, looking for a little money for software upgrades.
This, we just wanted to make sure that Jav give you a heads up on it because if he sends us the information and then he says, okay, I can come there in two weeks, then we can't tell him, no, we have to wait and see, we'll take it back to council. But yeah, just so that you have some idea of what's going on.
Yeah, because he stays fairly busy. It's hard to get him, it's hard to get any schedule, so he stays so busy. Alrighty. Any questions before we move on? Alrighty. Department reports? Everything good there, department heads? Alrighty. Committee reports? Alrighty. Go ahead, Steve.
I'll get with Julie Milligan, the secretary that takes the Animal Control Committee meeting minutes. There's some errors in the July and February that were included here. Nothing major, but I'll get with her about making some corrections to those.
Okay. A and P, anything on the minutes, Ms. Pam?
No, we actually just met today, and the new business we have is already on the agenda for tonight.
Alrighty. Well, we can move into old business. So actually, I had found, we found when we was looking, that we were supposed to have voted for mayor pro temp at the first of the year, so. I know Jeff has been doing it. If no objections and the council so vote for, and he's willing to serve, keep serving.
I move that he gets reappointed if he so desires. So I'm giving you an eye out.
Speak now or forever hold your peace. Okay. Motion by Mr. Martin, seconded by Mr. Thompson to reinstate or reaffirm Mr. Jeff Tatum as the mayor pro temp. Roll call vote, please, Ms. Clerk.
Rachel Tatum.
Abstain.
Thompson.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Low.
Yes.
Ishmael.
Yes.
Jeff Tatum.
Abstain.
Roland.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Alrighty, thank you. Old business number two is the vacancy on the Advertising Promotions Committee, which there was two vacancies, so Ms. Pam, you want to, I know we have two candidates.
We have a vacancy that is always filled by a second city council member. And so I would like to put it, or Mayor, you can, put a motion on the floor for our new Mr. Jason Low to fill that position. Do you want to do these one at a time or both at the same?
We can do them one at a time.
We can start with that one if you want.
Alrighty.
I have some questions. Since he just started on the city council, has been at one meeting, and he hasn't lived in the city that long, why are we appointing him to AMP?
I can give you our position from AMP, and then he can speak for himself as well. We know Jason's background from where he comes from, and he's got a lot of ties to what AMP does. And the second part is, he's always had a lot of ties, I don't know for how many years, but a very long time to Cherokee Village and the surrounding area, so that's.
So you do have an AMP background, then?
I mean, not AMP, no, not an AMP background, but I've been in Cherokee Village. I've owned property here since two thousand and seventeen.
Right, but have you lived in Cherokee Village since two thousand and seventeen?
No, but I've been to Cherokee Village about once, twice a month since two thousand and seventeen.
The reason I ask that is AMP can be a device that is used for promoting more than just rental property, real estate. It can also furnish money for our parks, which it has not done since its inception, and maintenance on our parks, which it has not done since our inception. And that's due to how I feel that the chair is leading the rest of the AMP commission. And since you are working for the chair, there might be a conflict of interest there because you're also his subordinate. So I'd be questionable about putting you on there so quickly due to how many people from restaurants do we have on AMP? You know, how many people do we have from hotels on AMP? And if he's the only board member, because it's elected official, so it could be the mayor, it could be the clerk. It could be any elected official, not just people that are sitting up here at the moment. So I would pause on his nomination myself personally right now until I got a little bit more information about, I mean, what he thinks. I'd like to interview him before I just say, yeah, sure.
Well, that, I mean, you can do that tonight, but here's my first question. Is there anyone elected official in this room that would like to be on AMP besides Mr. Low who volunteered?
How many elected officials were asked?
How many what?
Elected officials were asked.
I'm asking right now.
I'm asking you prior to this, how many elected officials did you guys ask?
He volunteered.
So no elected official was asked?
I'm asking right now. I put the question to the floor. Is there anyone else that wants to be considered? We can put them on the list tonight and interview.
My pause was, this would be the third member of King Rhodes on this committee.
Third member? Who?
That'd be the third person that works for King Rhodes on this committee. That is my concern.
Who's the other two?
We don't have, you know, people from restaurants?
We do.
Who?
Patrick, from Carol's Lakeview. And keep in mind, we've asked. That's my whole thing about this. Y'all said this has been going on so long. We have reached out and reached out and reached out and reached out. But the vacancy that you're talking about for an AMP tax collector of the community, that's up next. We have someone for that. This is an elected official position to be filled.
And how many years does it serve?
Two. They're all two-year. But I want to go back to that this will be the third employee of King Rhodes. Who?
Well, who are all the members?
Well, I'm sitting here going through the members, trying to figure out who the third King Rhodes employee is.
We can get off on a rabbit hole and chase that forever, but though, hey, I will say, just give me a minute. I will say that Mr. Jason approached me and asked and volunteered that he would like to serve on it, and he has a background in working festivals.
Yeah.
Which goes along, and like I said, that goes along with what the AMP does is putting on the festivals.
But my question to him is, will you keep an open mind on being able to finance our park and maintain our park? Would you keep an open mind on that?
So absolutely, but I want to point out something, and I hope this doesn't come. Oh, did I turn off? Sorry. I want to point this out, and I'm not trying to sound argumentative or even combative, but I'm on city council. So the concerns that you're bringing up as to my position on AMP and me being fair, I'm on the city council, so I don't understand why, if I'm on city council and the expectation is for me to be fair and listen to all arguments and make decisions, why that would change just because I'm on AMP.
It's just that the chair of AMP is also, works for the same place that you work for. So there could be some bias there, and that was my question, but you.
Hold on. We're getting personal.
No, I'm not trying to be personal.
We're getting personal.
But I see this is the only second time we met and talked, right?
Sure, absolutely.
So I haven't had a good exchange with you, and you haven't had a good exchange with me. So I will remove my objection, and I will second his nomination. Or was he nominated?
Yes, Ms. Pam.
Okay, then I second his nomination.
Well, I do have a question. Do you still want me to pose the question to the floor? Are there any other elected council members that would?
It didn't seem like anybody jumped up.
And one of the things is, they do, you know, with the Pi Festival and the Fourth of July, it's, they stay pretty busy. It's hard to get people to volunteer for no pay. To organize.
For no pay too.
Well, and just, and just a little bit, um, I won't go off into a rabbit hole, I promise, Mayor, but if I could speak for just a little bit.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, I have an extensive background in corporate events, um, both catering, um, event traffic, um, event coordination, um, onsite event management, um, extensive. I worked thirteen years as an event manager for the Juice Plus Company in Collierville. Um, in addition to that, I've also been on the executive board for two chamber of commerces, uh, one for Bahalia, Mississippi, and one in Olive Branch, Mississippi. Um, so I do, I do have experience in events, and I'm very passionate about Cherokee Village. That's why I moved here. So I really want to see it do great things.
I, I, I understand, and, and my whole thing was, we haven't had enough time.
Well, and it's, and honestly, I do appreciate the fact that you, you brought this up. Um, it shows that obviously everyone wants the right people in the right place, so I, I'm not upset at all that you questioned me or.
One of these days we'll just have to get.
Yeah, absolutely, I love it.
His nomination's second.
Motion on the floor.
Wait a minute, may I?
I still would like it addressed. Do I need to pose the question on the floor? Is there anyone else? So that way, if everyone says no, then it, it's a done deal and, and it can never come back, that no one was asked.
I would like to answer that question. That might be something to be interested in, but to be put under motion to say, okay, would you like to do this without any information, exactly what going on, make a decision right now? No. If you'd, but if I'd have been asked earlier and said, okay, here's what we do, here's what is involved, here's how much is involved, that you could make a decision? Yes, it might have been something I would do, but I'm not making a decision in five, in five seconds to say, okay, yes, do this.
Well, my only point to that would be that, that Rob, we all knew Rob was leaving and that that vacancy was gonna be open. And like the mayor said, Jason approached him about wanting to be on A and P. So it's up to this council, though, if you guys want to, to pause this tonight. And if she's interested, give her.
I'm saying no for the fact that it was just done at this time. I do not wanna hold it up for this point.
No, I'm not saying.
But I just wanted to say that.
That's not what I'm saying.
I agree with what you're talking about. It needs to be moved forward so that we can move on because it's been on the books. It's been on the agenda way too long.
Well, there's a motion on the floor, so.
Roll call or?
We, we need to do a, I mean, there's a motion on the floor, so we, we, uh, need to move on.
I'm calling for a question. Looking for the vote. I'm calling for the vote.
Roll call, roll call vote please.
And this is for?
Approval of Jason for A and P. Mr. Low, sorry. I get too inform, informal, I'm sorry.
Thompson.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Jason.
Abstain.
Ishmael.
Yes.
Jeff Tatum.
Abstain.
Roland.
I don't need to abstain, do I, for being on it? Okay, then yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Rachel Tatum.
Yes.
That's six yeses.
Okay. And vacancy number two was to be filled by Mr. James Gillie.
Yes.
Who owns the, I always get this wrong, Happy, Happy Camper Plantation Park.
I tried to say it three times today and I messed it up, so I think you got it right.
Happy Camper Plantation Park. And, uh, which is, which is the camper park, uh, out on Elks Drive.
Yeah, the airport.
Uh, I'll, I'll, I'll make a motion to accept that, but I'd also, as a side note, could we, next meeting from A and P, have a list of who's on it and when their term is up?
Sure.
Know what they represent too, it'd be nice.
Yeah, you know.
What their responsibilities are.
What your position.
Yeah, we can compare it to the bylaws of the A and P commission. Um, this wasn't a personal attack on you. I'll explain later.
Oh, absolutely, no.
I really just think that it had to do with, we haven't known you long enough to know, okay, does, is he the right one for that position? It is nothing against you.
I, I completely understand.
Oh, uh, who made the motion for Mr. Gillie?
I'll make it.
Oh, Mr. Tatum made the motion for Mr. James Gillie to serve on the A and P commission?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mrs. Tatum. Roll call vote please.
Martin.
Yes.
Low.
Yes.
Ishmael.
Yes.
Jeff Tatum.
Yes.
Roland.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Rachel Tatum.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Motion passed.
All ready. With the, moving into new business, special use permits.
Can we group these all in?
We can. Uh, we have three of them tonight. Twenty twenty-five dash zero one is Art Center of North Arkansas Shakespeare at the Gazebo. Twenty twenty-five dash zero two is Howland Elks Lodge, the annual Pepper Martin Memorial Turkey Shoot to be held March twenty-second, two thousand twenty-five. The twenty twenty-five dash zero three is the Howland Elks Lodge Annual Pepper Martin Memorial Turkey Shoot, October fourth and November first, two thousand twenty-five. We can, uh,
You making the motion?
Motion, motion made by Mr. Tatum to pass all three, seconded by Mr. Martin. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion passes. Now, the, uh, new business number two is the resolution number twenty twenty-five dash zero three. It's the resolution to adopt the annual operating budget for the city of Cherokee. We approved it in November. We just didn't have a resolution with it when we approved it. And so this is the, this is just the rev, resolution to affirm what we voted on in November.
I make a motion that we approve the resolution as long as it conforms to the paperwork we were given in November.
Second.
So that paperwork is attached to this resolution.
Yes, it will be.
Thank you.
Mo, uh, motion by Mr. Martin, seconded by Mr. Tatum to pass resolution number twenty twenty-five dash zero three, resolution to adopt the annual operating budget for the city of Cherokee Village, which was previously approved at the, in the November regular city council meeting.
But we didn't have the paperwork.
We didn't have the resolution to go with it.
That's what we're fixing.
Uh, roll call vote, Ms. Clerk.
Low.
Yes.
Ishmael.
Yes.
Jeff Tatum.
Yes.
Roland.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Rachel Tatum.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay. New business number three is the Arkansas Department of Emergency Management Mitigation Plan Renewal. Uh, I got this sent to me through the, uh, uh, oh, through the county, through Sharp County Judges, the county judges office, which comes out of, uh, comes through Batesville through, uh, I believe it was Rural Development, wasn't it? It's Chris Jenkins. But anyway, this is the mitigation plan for Sharp County and the city of Cherokee Village. It actually, it's nothing, nothing's changed. Uh, I didn't know that they're on a five-year renewal period, and so this is their renewal, which the, which mitigation plan is for in case a natural disaster happens, the city of Cherokee would be eligible for state and federal monies.
So this hasn't changed since five years?
No, it hasn't changed. It's just a renewal, and without it, uh, we would not be eligible for any state or federal monies come a natural disaster.
Make a motion.
I was actually told that, or, and I, in discussions, uh, because Fulton County at this time does not have a mitigation plan, that with, and, uh, with, and Sharp County having a mitigation plan, that with the city of Cherokee falling in both counties, that because the city seat is in Sharp County and we pass it for the totality of the city of Cherokee, it will cover, it's going to cover the Sharp and Fulton County portions of Cherokee Village, then, of the entirety, so.
I second that motion.
Motion by Mr. Tatum, seconded by Mr. Martin to pass the resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero four, the Arkansas Department of Emergency Management Mitigation Plan Renewal. Roll call vote please.
Ishmael.
Yes.
Jeff Tatum.
Yes.
Roland.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Rachel Tatum.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes, and thank you for putting it up online.
Yes.
Yeah.
Motion passed.
Uh, and actually, when I texted, or when I, uh, corresponded with him, it was the original documents weigh over two hundred pages, so he sent us the, uh, abbreviated version, which is a hundred and thirty pages.
That version is actually on the website. I made sure I got it on the website today so that it could be reviewed because the resolution that you just passed states in there that it's attached to this.
So a motion by Ms. Pam to go into a short executive session to deal with, uh, dealing with personnel.
Can I make a comment?
Got a second?
Can I make a comment first?
On?
The agenda, when it was put online, was rather blurry. I don't know if there's something we can do to make it, I mean, I got old eyes, you know.
I've been, we've been working with the website, and there was so much stuff to go on there, where we're trying to condense it a little, and figured out today that it's condensed too much, so I will have to go back and start enlarging things so that it works.
Okay. I'd appreciate it if we can.
We got a motion, got a second?
Yep.
Seconded by Mr. Tatum. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Let's adjourn for a short executive session. We'll be right back.
That's why I'm here, going these chairs.
Only me and you need our own bench.
Yeah, yeah, between us.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
That is your invitation.
Oh, that's not official city business.
It's a party.
How are you? District Court is more funnier.
It's like a lunch party, a little different.
You thought you said this was a city?
Little ladder.
This is. This is.
I'll just take some place where I don't. So they're not up here. They're just. Other ones here. So. They always. How many? And we. I think. On this. For. And you. Was. 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 That's. It's usually not. We're high. We both. We have. We're. Two hours. I thought. It was. I got ready. We were. We were. You see now. It's just. One. It was also. I do. I just. I. So. I think I got into. So. Or. Or. It's. It's. Yeah. There's. Probably. The. In this program. Yes. Well, that's one of the. All of us are. You know, like. Yeah. Yeah. Who's a guy. Very kind of mission. Do you know the. Or the children. Everybody. The wrong. It's not the wrong. That he. Too long. It's. Attorney. Whatever. It's. Everybody was. Why? Oh, wait. You really think that there. Right. It was such an overflow. Right. The judge just. Even though you would. Expectations that are minor. You know. Uh. Always be. While you. Please go on the next. Your auditorium. In. Safety. This has a safety. So. It's for. Pretty nation. Almost. I. He was. That's. One. Person. It's. Then I got those. I didn't. Want to say. I'm. Those. I know. There's. I don't believe it's funny anymore. He goes. I guess. I guess. That was. But it was. They were similar. You just. Had. Well. He was. Absolutely. I go where she was. Was it? So. It was at. His. I'm. His. Dinner.
How. They. They.
Well, I'll say. You. Do. I don't think. That. Is. Yeah. So. I have. And. I've been here. No. I was. It's. So. I think. Not. Yeah. It's like. You. 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 I would. I know. So. That's. That's. Long. Yeah. I go. Good. Oh. It's like. It's like. It was. More. So. That's. And it's still. Okay. Over the years. Finally. We. Right. We. Even religion. I'm not a religious person, but. And I argue about it all. Religion. To. It's. Wrong. Wrong. And I'm. I'm.
And then. I had. I had. Says.
But.
And. Yes. That's. And he said. My. I don't like. I don't like. I don't like. I don't like.
It's like. Oh.
Don't.
It's. Awesome. It's. Which. You. I don't know. It's. Scary. But. Pretty close. You have a good picture. Yeah. About twenty minutes. I'm saying right there. Well. It's. Well. I'm. Get something wrong. I was. I. I think. Something. Okay. Now. 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 If you do something. Tomorrow. I'll be after you. What he did was wrong. So. His. Attention. Make it good in the forecourt or whatever. You know. I don't like. I don't like. I don't like. To. For. So. I. Who would be. And then he had to go home. Your parents.
Well.
Shake.
Well. Absolutely.
You would. No. No.
He's. I don't.
This way. This way.
I said. I don't know. No. I'm. I'm. My. I'm. Well. They would start asking how. I just. I just. I told people that was. I'm. 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 And. I'm. 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 I was. I was. Me. I was. A little. But.
No. It's. I don't want to use my. Just. That's. It's. 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 I'm. I'm. I love. Me. Well.
Well. Yeah. It is. So. So. People. Why do you need your. Well. It's. Yeah.
You guys. It's.
Yeah. Exactly.
Yeah. Cause you have to tell them what companies you're with and what businesses you're. Of. So. But. I look at. No. And I'm. I'm. You. You. You.
Oh.
You. Yeah. You're. You. You. I want. I. I just. Was. Now. From. I'm. I don't. I don't. Like. Mary is. And. Doctor. She's. It's. I don't. I don't. I watch. Cause we are. Who. Essentially. You know. That. I don't. I don't. And. Turning seventy this year. Big problem. Almost. Three. And. It's like. Because of. Yeah. That's. That's. What I'm. About. I'm. Why isn't it? Which? Do. That's. It's. It's. It's.
I'm.
I'm. I'm. He's. Black. Well. It's. I mean. I don't. I'm. Same. It's red. But it's. Black. It's. It's. So. You. I'm. Right. But. I'm. Yeah. Maybe. Maybe. Higher. Because. I'm. I'm. Street. For. Yes. I'm. I'm. Oh. That's. I was. Yeah. And he's. It's like. I'll go. Pull up. I'll. I'll. God. Building. A. Yes. I was.
That's.
You have. You. Some. And. But. First.
Which is. I'm. He's.
No. It's. He's. That's. Probably. That's. Sharp. Really? Yeah. Well. Perfect. They. You. You. That's. That's. I'm. I'm. So. It's. Uh. This. Uh. She was. Because. She. She. First. So. I. Everything. So. 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 See. What? 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 So. Chair. We see. That's. We care. We're. Ladies. We're. So. But. Councillor. Councillor. She. 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 Obviously. That. She. She. But. And. She.
And that's. And so. It's. Like.
They're. Jersey. Hmm.
You want. So. You.
So. Sure. They have. They're. Joey. But. They're. Of course. I. Do. That's. All. I'm. Joe. Of course. It's. They're. They did. We just. They. 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 They don't. They're. About. About. Just. There's. The. Hey. Also. Well. Second. I. So. Yeah. That was. I don't. Me. The. I don't. I don't. We don't. I. Do. You. 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 And. And. You. 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 So. First. First. That's. Sir. Sounds. Right. So. We. They. So. John. The. I don't. I always. Well. Either. If. That's. You're. All. You. That's. So. You. 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 Yeah. You. 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 That's. So. So. You. From. You. He. That's. Well. I'm. I'm. Hmm.
Yeah. And.
So. Actually. That. You. 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 Or. You. 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 You're. 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 Is. Hey. You know. What do we need? You're. And. You. 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 Go. Now. I have. I'm. I'm. Into. The. Profession. Where. It's. And. Was. Very. But. They know. That. They. 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 See. Yeah. I don't. We. So. First. And. One thing. That. I. Really. Good. Yeah. Hard. So. You.
Thank you.
You. Say. There. Now. She's just so. She. Tall. So. Really. She can do the rest.
We. I mean.
Turn that. And. I don't. I don't. You. You. And so. I just. It's. You're. He. 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 You.
Fourteen. I spent. My.
She. 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 But. I don't. She. 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 I don't. Tell. I was. She. She. Oh. I just. They. Not. That's. For. I'm. You're. Right. That's. Because. Because. So. 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 For. This. For. So. So. That. The. Honor. There's. I'm. 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 Okay. She. 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 She.